So I'm calling to order the meeting, the April 20, or 12th to 2022, meeting of the Tukwila School Board of Directors. We're doing this via Zoom and see, roll call, looks like we have everybody here except Director of Power Writer is excused. And everybody else is here. I want to welcome our guests who are joining us as we go through our work this evening. And Director Hoover, do you want to do the welcome message and land recognition?
Yes, thank you so much. So as we've been doing, we just want to start our, our meetings off with these group agreements from the courageous conversations. So we really, as a board, want to, want to honor and practice these things as we move through conversation and make decisions and honor community voice. So we are committed to staying engaged, experience, experience discomfort and be vulnerable, speak your truth and expect and accept non-closure. And so to take a moment to honor the land that we are on, we in the Tukwila School District acknowledged that the land where we teach, collaborate, learn and play is a traditional land of the first people of Seattle, the Duamish and Mukulshu people, past and present, and honor with gratitude the land itself and the Duamish and Mukulshu tribes. As a public school district, we have a responsibility for the stewardship of this land and we recognize the Duamish and Mukulshu people who have been living and working here since time immemorial.
Okay, thank you, Director Hoover. Like to get a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
It's been approved and seconded that we approve the agendas listed here in Board Docs. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Is the agenda is approved. So our first agenda item here is going to be a recognition of the Tukwila School District from the work that has been done with Cambridge University. Which staff member would like to?
It'd be Mr. Howard.
Mr. Howard, okay. Mr. Howard, the mic is yours.
Hi, I'd like to introduce to our Board and Dr. Herndon Nancy Potter, who's going to take it from here about the acknowledgement of Tukwila Elementary School and the work they've been doing with the Cambridge International Education. I'd like to introduce to you Nancy, Dr. Nancy Potter.
Hooray. Good evening, School Board of Directors and Superintendent Hindon. I'm happy to be here to celebrate and applaud your direction, your leadership and your courage. In the midst of a global pandemic, you explored and endorsed instructional options that are best to meet the diverse needs of your students and your staff. Despite incredible challenges, your administrators have led, your instructors have taught, and your children have learned. I'm Nancy Potter. I'm an educator, as Ted said, who is thrilled to be working with Cambridge University. And I'm excited to be here this evening to share, at least virtually, my praise and answer any questions you might have. Next. During the last school year, your incredible CAO Ted Howard approached Cambridge in his search for proven methods to instill in students an informed curiosity and a lasting passion for learning. While Cambridge is relatively new in our country, for over 160 years, Cambridge has partnered with districts such as Tukwila. Next slide. Designed to be accessible to all students despite background and circumstance, Cambridge is unique in aligns teaching and learning professional development with assessments. Tukwila now has access to all of the Cambridge courses K8, which are Mac to Common Core and to Next Gen. So Cambridge offers students and their teachers a world-class curriculum in art and design, PE, digital literacy, communication technology, music, PE, English as a second language, as well as of course, the core English, science and math, and global perspectives, which is pretty much social studies on steroids. Next slide. Tukwila, such, just like other schools around our, actually around the world, were attracted to global perspectives because it's a performance-based skills class where academic study is framed in a practical, real-world context to develop transferable skills such as critical thinking, problem-solving, research, communication and collaboration. Engaging students and offering them the opportunity to learn with students around the world, which I think is especially resonates with Tukwila, given that you have students from all over the world. Students will study topics that are relevant to them that, that really fit and are, and within their interest, because there's just a huge range of global issues they can look at. And there's always more than one point of view. So learning is the focus with Cambridge. On a larger scale, it's in 1599, the Washington Secondary Pathway. It qualifies for the state of, the Washington State Seal of Bar Literacy. And then, of course, at the secondary level, the exams qualify for college credit to the tune of about $15 for, for an A level. And of course, parents appreciate how Cambridge opens college doors and scholarship opportunities. I figured out for a presentation recently that students at the University of Washington, the Cambridge students from our state saved about almost $4 million in tuition savings for their work in 21. So next slide, please. So, so schools have to undergo a rigorous evaluation in order to become a Cambridge school. It includes a site visit and classroom observations. And then after COVID shuttered schools around the world, Tukwila persevered in its application process. And, and Tuck Elementary, I was really proud, was the first elementary in America to be approved with this more rigorous process because of the fact that there were a lot of things that were really important that Cambridge always looks for when they're evaluating an application. And, you know, because of COVID, the peripheral vision that I call it. You know, it was just, it was just a much harder process, trust me. So I am absolutely delighted and thrilled to celebrate presenting you, and you are the first district, next slide, in the world to, to earn this honor. So welcome to the community of scholars of Newton, Tennyson, Darwin, Hawking. And I'm just really very, very pleased and delighted at, at all you've done for your students and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Does anybody have any questions?
No, but Ted, thank you for working on that opportunity for our students and pursuing it. This is quite an honor.
Well, Tukwila Elementary, they took the bull by the horns and went after Global Studies and wanted to actually make it applicable to our students here in Tukwila. Since we have 76 languages, they, they really took it to heart and, and personalize that curriculum. So I'd like to publicly thank Dr. Herndon as well, because without his leadership, we wouldn't have been able to bring Cambridge in. And Tukwila just, you know, embraced it and started moving forward with it. The other two elementary schools are still working, work in progress. Tukwila was just a little bit further ahead on the readiness to implementation, so.
Yeah, they, they had kind of a head start. They were the first ones that got involved, that Cascade View and Thorndike as well. And both of, you know, along with, you know, Principal Salisbury, you know, Principal, you know, Thomas and Felder have been incredible in terms of, you know, being part of, your teachers were trained this summer. That was a huge lift. We had 60 of your elementary teachers being trained. And Constance pointed out, Constance pointed out how, how Cambridge worked so well with Charlotte Danielson. Because of the, the, just because it's set up to be good teaching and learning. So I was, I was, I was very, very happy. I, I'm come more from a secondary background, but as I age, I realize that it's really all about starting, starting kids, you know, early. And Cambridge actually even has a pre-K, not in America yet.
Middle school and high school.
I miss, I misspoke the principal, the proud principal's name. Sorry. If I was in class, I'd do push-ups for getting the wrong name.
Are the middle school and high school involved in this also?
Not at this point. No, they, they would have, the, the elementary does have access to the middle school curriculum because of the way Cambridge has spiraled. So that if a student at fourth or fifth grade is working at that level, they can access that curriculum. But it would be, would be the similar process where Showalter would have to apply to be a school, Foster would have to apply, if they were interested in, in being a school. And I'd be very, very happy to, to talk to them about it.
Thank you.
So this may be a question from Mr. Howard, but I'm not completely familiar with this. So, so aside from training, or is this, does this include curriculum that's used at the elementary level or?
Yes, it's a curriculum scaffolded for our students for all levels. And that's why we chose social studies, because it was a way for our teachers to pilot it and embrace it and personalize what, what they would like to see. And global issues, our teachers are really excited about that because they could actually make it applicable to where our students currently are at. Sometimes when we have students come in, they're, they're staggered around literacy and math contests, but social studies, it was a leveling the playing field with that process. So kudos to our teachers who asked for that and they embraced that. They went forward with it.
And because it's created for, there really are only five countries in the world where English is their first language. So the curriculum is actually created for students who do not speak English as their first language. And therefore, it's very performance-based, very hands-on. The, the, it's created in order to, to help students learn through each one of the disciplines. So it's, so it's spiraled and it's articulated. And it just, there was a slide that kind of showed you the variety of resources that your teachers have access to within what they call the school support hub. So it is very, very flexible by design, because it, we recognize that what works in Tukwila is not going to work in Pakistan, you know, is going to be different from what's in Sub-Saharan Africa. So it's, it's designed to, and especially global perspectives, is designed around a series of challenges, whereas the teacher just might pick one challenge and it just might be something that is, you know, of current interest to students. You know, everything from, from chocolate to, you know, to health to, I mean, it's, it's just, it's a really just very incredible curriculum. But it also has resources as well for, for teachers and for the learners.
So is this, so if it's a curriculum plus the associated training, did this, has this gone through the Curriculum Council?
Yes, it has. That's why we're piloting it. So we could actually find out what we know and what we don't know. So we allow teachers to pilot it so they can figure out what worked for our kids, what didn't work, what adjustments they needed to do. And then from there, we're going to learn from that as we start to move forward with some of the other adoptions that we're doing in Curriculum Council. So this was trial and error, but it was also a great way for us to learn what we know and what we don't know and where, and have our teachers lead that process, not our curriculum developers or outside people who don't know Tukwila.
Okay, so this is, this is kind of a pilot project. And at some point, there will be a curriculum that comes for approval to the school board. Is that the, the process?
Yep. Once we finish, at the end of this year, it'll just be going into year two, we'll have all that information. And we'll have data points because we want to make sure of met the race and equity tool as well. So we'll have the data points and we'll be able to look at all that information and share our findings with the, with the board.
Okay, great. Just wanted to understand the process.
I've been in schools all over the world, Cambridge schools all over the world, and I have yet to see a school that has Cambridge the same. We just brought a school on board in, in K8 in Kingman. They, they were middle school and high schools were already on board and they, they wanted to, to move it down. And, and most of them, what they do, they do start with global perspectives just because of the way it's, it's, you know, it's, it's designed. And it is, it's interesting because that's the only course that runs K-12. And it's the one when the, where the university, universities talk about how much they like Cambridge, what they're really talking about is global perspectives. Because what it, what it asks children to do at an age-appropriate level is to find information, research that information, work together to look at that information from a variety of viewpoints and then to report it out. And it's just, it's incredible to watch students just becoming engaged in what they're doing.
I'm sure that I could do some research and find this curriculum, but I'm wondering if you could give us a link that would give us some introduction to the global perspectives curriculum or?
Sure. So, so it's always kind of difficult to find anything, right? Especially on internet, although, you know, our friend Google does whatever. Yes, I'm, I'm very happy. So should I send that to Mr. Howard?
Yeah, Mr. Howard.
Yeah, yeah. And I had sent him that stuff before. So I'm, so the, the way it works is that there are, first of all, I'll send the URL that anybody can look at. There are a lot of resources that are public facing on our website. And then there are the, what, what they have, what Cambridge calls the schemes of work. We, it doesn't really translate into English or American because it's more than a lesson plan. And it, it, you know, it's not as, I suppose, it just isn't as regimented as a lesson plan. But beyond, beyond the firewall, for lack of a better term, you have to be a Cambridge school in order to get access to these, many of the robust teaching tools, the learner's guides, the syllabuses, that sort of stuff. Now, at the high school level, those are right on the, the website. So I will send you some information. If you want to look at it, and I'll just send the global perspectives. If there's other ones that you're interested in, please let me know. We are constantly revising the work and that's what's so exciting about what's going on in Tukwila is we just revise in order to, you know, mesh with Next Gen, the science, the math, the English and the global perspective. So it's, it's, this is the first year, it's, it's a, you know, brand. I mean, global perspectives, they've all been around before, right? That they, they are changing the curriculum in order to meet the needs. And the topic that we just introduced was computing, which actually is teaching kids how to code by grade through three, Python and Sketch. And the reason that they're and we know that, you know, maybe a third grade teacher is not going to know how to, to code. So there's resources for them to help their students, so.
Hey, Dr. Potter, you're going to get me in trouble. Dr. Herndon is going to get me. You're, you're selling too many products here. I got a small budget here.
Well, you, I mean, you get all of it, right? You get all, you get, you know, you, you've got global perspectives, you get every, you get, you get everything at the, you know, at the K through A. And then if, you know, and then if Showalter wanted to, to, you know, they could decide if they wanted to have the the elementary curriculum or if they wanted to have the high school. So it is, it's not just one thing. You get everything because, because we're really about teaching and learning. We're, you know, I'm, you know, those of you that know me know that I'm, I'm a teacher and what pushes me is, is students. And I want to do what's best for them. And what I'm excited about Cambridge is I see kids who had not been successful in a, you know, in a advanced type of a class, being successful in in Cambridge. 100% of the kids at Bethel pass global perspective. This is at the high school level. 100% of them pass their global perspectives and, and and the same thing at One Need a High School, Federal Way as well. Just, it works.
All right, thanks, Dr. Potter. I think there's some other things on the agenda tonight. So thank you.
Okay, bye. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Howard, it'd be interesting to get a, a kind of an overview of your vision in terms of how it's, this might fit in with Avid and AP. And seems like there's a fair amount of overlap potential. And, you know, where we're going with all that would be, I think would be helpful. So. All right, that's, that one, let's see. Next item on the agenda is public comment. So this is a new format. So people can submit public comment or they can raise their hand, I think. Miss Cor, do we have any, any submitted comments?
I did not receive any written or submitted comments. And I'm looking at chat right now and attendees, and I do not see any hands raised. One second.
Yeah.
I don't see any hands raised.
I don't see anybody in the chat for hands raised. So we'll have another opportunity at the, at the end of the meeting in case somebody thinks of something along the way. So. Okay, we'll move along to the race and equity update. So that'd be Dr. Herndon, I think.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, board members and guests. So just a few items. Well, of course, we're on spring break this week, so we don't have classes in session, but last week was a busy week for sure. We had several listening sessions, one on SROs with students up at Foster. We'll have another one scheduled for after we get back from spring break. And then that process should be wrapping up with the listening sessions. Then there'll be much like in the strategic planning and opportunity to get all of that feedback and then have each of the stakeholders group kind of engage in conversation with the police department as well to talk about what the future of SROs might look like. So a lot of good initial questions. I haven't seen yet all the information yet from University of Washington synthesizing all the feedback, but we still have more steps to go. And so far, I think the input's been pretty, pretty good, at least from what I've heard from University of Washington. Additionally, we had several of the stakeholder groups for the strategic planning sessions. We had four of those sessions last week. More to come on that as well. So CEE, Center for Educational Effectiveness, John Stich and some of his colleagues have been directing those. And the same process will be happening where we get all the feedback and information from them. And then there'll be a larger summit that brings together all the stakeholders to engage in conversation about what we might, recommendations to the board for prioritization of what some of those goals should be in our strategic plan. So so far, there's, the sessions have been attended, different numbers for the different stakeholders, but I think it's, it should be an interesting progress. I'm, I'm curious to see what that input looks like for that as well. And then one of the last pieces that I have on race and equity, two, actually two items. I know Tukwila or Thorndike Elementary is continuing their process of of renaming or re-identifying mascot for their school. So they're in the process of getting feedback from their fifth grade students about what that might look like. And then there'll be a conversation again about what the item is that they have. And then still will have some consultation with Duamish tribe about that. But the hope is to have one identified pretty soon, new mascot, new image. And I don't know if that'll translate to a, a different color as well. If you have any Thorndike items right now, they're typically the green and blue. So I don't know if a new mascot will change any of their color schemes or not, but we'll, we'll wait for that process. My guess is that we'll be wrapping up probably sometime in May, because we really have about a week or so, maybe two weeks after we're back from spring break. So we'll find out what that process looks like for them. And then lastly, I'm working on a process to get Student Advisory Council for the superintendent. We have several areas, superintendents that have the same item. I had a conversation with our student rep, Mr. Sam Fia Pito about that. And so I'll be engaging in a process of getting some feedback from additional students, seeing how they have it set up in a couple of our surrounding districts. And then getting that in place before the end of the school year, or at least identifying students who have an interest and getting that started for the fall of the latest. So that's what I have for the race and equity updates for this, for this meeting.
Any questions from board members on that subject?
Yeah, I have two or a few quick questions. One's about the strategic planning. I know you said it's kind of varied, but do you have any idea like what kind of numbers?
I don't. I typically am there to do an introduction, but I know people come up afterwards. So I think there's, there have been either five or six meetings thus far. I think the fewest number of folks I saw in a meeting was eight and the most was about 40. So my guess is by the end of it, we'll have, you know, probably around 150, maybe more. So individual input from different individuals.
And are they planning to do another round of each of those stakeholder groups before kind of bringing them all?
I don't think they're doing another round for each group. I think what he'll, his plan is to have kind of a summit that brings back all of the stakeholder groups together so that they can have the conversation so that they're not in the individual stakeholder groups by themselves. So the initial piece, I think, was to have them in the, by the stakeholders just to hear kind of the light conversations and then bring everybody together. So all the stakeholders can hear the information from other stakeholders.
Thank you. And then just curious around the Supervisor Advisory Council. That's super great. I love that you're, appreciate that you're pursuing that. Just kind of curious, what the structures that you have heard about so far look like, particularly like what age range of students are you?
Yeah, from, from the brief piece that I've seen, for most of them, it's high school. And the number of students typically range anywhere from like four to 10, kind of depends. So that's why I want to kind of get some input from a few of my colleagues who already have this in place to figure out if there's a number that works better or has been working better for them. But I'd actually like to include middle schoolers as well. So I'm trying to figure out kind of a good balance. And it could be that some of my colleagues have, have tried that as well. So I just want to get feedback from some folks who've been doing it for a little while longer. So that's, that's just kind of what I've seen from a few of their social media posts when they kind of do their photo ops with the Superintendent Advisor Council. I see anywhere from like four to 10 students with them.
Hear more about that.
Yeah.
Okay, there's no other questions. We can go to the next agenda item, which is the COVID-19 update.
Sure. So a few of the items, there has, there's a, there has not been any change in guidance from King County Department of Health. We continue to monitor all the cases. So I continue to watch King County Department of Health website. I know it doesn't report again, all of the cases, but at least in that you would see any rises in things like hospitals. At least in that you would see any rises in things like hospitalizations or deaths. Both of which for tech will have actually been zero since the beginning of March, which is great. Obviously, we don't want our community impacted too adversely by this particular virus and even the case counts. Just again, all things being equal have remained about the same. In fact, the rolling average for the last week. Is down around a little less than two per day, which is. Again, trending in the right direction. I know there are some rises in other places, not like Omicron, but there are some increased numbers. So that's why we're kind of continuing to watch it for Tuck Willa. The school district itself. Last week, I think we had two students that were out and one staff person again. So our numbers of students or staff also remains pretty low, which is good news. And we continue to keep our stock of PPE and so masks and tests available, plenty of available for both of those. As I've been up into the buildings, you know, we still have a lot of students and staff who continue to wear their masks, which are great. And I kind of check in with. Both students and staff and principals and just kind of ask them. If there are any issues and and luckily for us, they're they're not. I think people are really respecting the choices that people are deciding to make about whether or not they want to wear a mask or not wear masks. So. That doesn't seem to be any sort of contention. And I've been in all of the schools kind of in different situations. So. So right now, again, we just continue to watch that, make sure that we're. You know, hopefully anticipating any trends that might be there. So we have spring break, so we'll see if that means anything different for when we get back. But we want to just make sure that we can respond if we need to and anticipate if we're seeing a rise in anything else. But. So far, the general numbers for King County seem to be, you know, a slight uptick, but again, nothing like what we saw in the winter and. Hopefully that's the way it stays. So that's that's what we're hoping with again, hopefully a continued downtrend, but I know that. The trends are a little bit different in different places. So there's still a lot of information there, which is something we're we're definitely wanted to continue to watch. We still have all of our contact tracers and. Quarantine specialists available to help any of the students who may be out as well. But. As of last week, again, we had two that were positive, both at one elementary school. And when the contact tracers are not helping with that, there is other work that they can do. But as soon as they're needed to do the job they're hired to do, that's what they focus on. So that's what I have for COVID update.
Any questions?
Yeah, one quick question. Are you continuing to do the staff surveys? And if so, is it possible to get kind of an updated? Report?
Yeah, I haven't. The one survey that we were gonna do, the last survey we did was around masks and so we got that information back. Actually, we're planning on doing a survey when we get back around. The number of people who are interested in getting. A fourth or a second booster. Our collaborative partner who does the vaccine clinics. They are willing to come out and help do that, but they want to make sure there are enough people who actually show up or scheduling appointments to do that because. It requires staffing and everything else for them to come out. The recent. Recommendation of a second booster or fourth shot for those who are either. Still needing that or are over the age of 50. We were gonna see how many people were interested in that. So. That hopefully in conjunction with the younger students, the under five year olds. So the provider likes us to be right around close to 100. People who are interested in doing that. So we will be doing a survey about that. Just to see kind of where things are and then also making sure that we have anything available for. If they're running into any issues around PPE access or anything about that, but that'll be coming up once we get back from spring break.
Thank you. Sorry, just one last thing. I wonder if perhaps in that survey, it might. Be useful just to do a check in about how folks feel like communication is going, particularly around, you know, COVID related things. Because we again want to make sure that we're following through with our commitment to give folks the opportunity to do that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, those are questions. We'll go to the next item, which is the legislative update. So. One of the things about when the legislature is done, they pass bills. However, there's a couple more steps in the process before it kind of gets to the. You know, implemented in a school district. The first, of course, is the governor's signature and. This this last week or two, the governor basically signed all the bills and there weren't any. Vitos in the ones that I was I was watching. So that was good. And then. The third process or third step in this process is once the governor signs it, then it's given over typically they're given over to the various. State agencies to actually implement them. And sometimes that involves writing some extensive rules and how they get implemented. So. That's another important step in the process and that's kind of where some of the some of them are right now. Some bills are pretty straightforward. They don't need a whole lot of work, but. Other bills, you know, do need the agencies to fill in a lot of the details in terms of how they are implemented. So. Just wanted to touch on a few of these ones. The first one is kind of the one at the bottom, and that is the governor signed the the main budget bill, which is the main bill that comes out of every session and. Our local representative Burke List put in an ear what's called an earmark for us. They do that occasionally earmark certain monies for certain school districts. And this was $148,000 for before and after school programs. This is money that's only good for just what I think they say fiscal 23. So in other words, the next school year. It's and it's. The wording in the bill was was interesting. It's it's pretty wide open in terms of. I can just read it is provided solely to provide before and after school. Programming to low income elementary students in the Tuck Willa School District. So it's targeted at our elementary schools. Funding in such a subsection maybe distributed to the Tuck Willa School District or to local before. An after school program providers that provide childcare for low income elementary students in the school district. So. Those are kind of the restrictions. It's kind of. It'll be interesting to see whether this is going to go through OSPI and they're going to provide any additional restrictions or whatever, but. That's the bill as it stated, which is pretty wide open. So it'll be for our elementaries and. One of the things that's that kind of is interesting because we had some. You know, we have some requests from the robotics programs in all their elementaries, which is an after school program is to. Upgrade some of their upgrade the robotics equipment. We're currently using like 10 year old Lego sets and. So this could be another, I mean, that particular request I could see coming out of tech levy, it could come out of ESSR funds, it could come out of this money. So. Anyway, it'll be interesting to sort through this one and see what. What we can end up using this money for. So it's a good good chunk of money. Again, it's one time money and it's only for the one year, but. It'll be interesting. Hopefully, we'll be able to come up some good creative ways to use it. The 2078 is an interesting one. It's outdoor education program. So this one, actually, the state is going to. Provide about $10 million statewide to fund outdoor education programs and it's specifically. Set up. That would almost targeted at the way we do it. So it's for fifth or sixth graders, outdoor education programs, and they have to be like three to five days. Kind of live in school time things and and they need to have high school counselors and all of those things is the way we've run our program for years. Which is great. And it's also going to the priority will be for the for the high poverty school. So anyway, that. That one will require some rule writing by OSPI and grant process that we need to run through, but. It would be good. So hopefully we'll be able to get get some of our outdoor education program going again next year. And get some good help from that funding source. The next one up is 1153, which is language access. This one again is going to be interesting to see how OSPI goes about implementing, but the way the the bill is written is for districts with over 75. Different languages, which I believe we qualified just barely. I think last I saw we were like 80 or 85. They will fund essentially one FTE person to actually implement a language access program. So. That would be really good. Well, there will be and whether we qualify for the full FD or a partial, I think we would qualify one way or the other. So. That will be one that hopefully we'll want to. Take advantage of here. Let me shut off my phone. Okay. So that's a good one for us. The next one up 5793 is. Well, I can community members to participate in boards and committees. So this is one again that will be kind of interesting to see how OSPI develops the details for this, but it's basically. Anybody who is. Whose income, family income is 400% of poverty. So that's basically. Free and reduced lunch qualifies is like 200% of poverty. So this would be twice the poverty. It's about. About $100,000 for a family of four. And so there we could provide some stipends for folks to participate in committees that we might want to put together. It does. Limit the the compensation is for the purpose of like transportation or childcare or. Food, that kind of thing. So it has to be for specific purposes. And it'll be interesting to see how they go about what process would go about to determine. How we could would go about determining whether a family or a person qualifies for that. So there'll be some process I'm sure that OSPI will come up with. But. Anyway, that's that's another one that we should be watching. Addressing public transportation allocations. That one, actually the build in pass, but there's allocation in the budget bill to. Cover some of the expenses related to the Kenny Vento students, students experiencing homelessness. So. As they're they're working on trying to restructure the whole pupil transportation allocation funding system. And so that's one. We've kind of watched to see how they go about doing that. And the last one I'm going to talk about is the is the top one 1664. This is one that's touted a lot, said, well, the legislature did such wonderful things in terms of. Social emotional funding for staff and but you know, they really don't talk about the exact numbers. So I want to talk about exactly the numbers that are coming out of this and it's not. I mean, it's something, but it's not as good as we would like. So. In terms of the council, so we're talking, these are counselors, social workers, nurses and psychologists. These are the. You know, student welfare, student mental health kind of system positions. So starting. They implemented the increase in these positions over three years. There was discussion of doing it all upfront, but they decided. Which would have been more costly in this year's budget, of course, but they decided to spread it out. In terms of counselors. We would get like half an FTE of counselor for each of our schools because they're the high poverty schools. And then for next year and then 2324, we actually would lose about a sixth of an FT on that, which we would get back the following year. And the reason for that is there the legislature is doing what they usually do around. High poverty schools, they give them a little more. Up front and then, you know, within a year or two, it's back to the same for everybody. So they're, you know, they don't. Really implement this equity lens throughout the process. They just. And it's it's just it's a point I keep making to them, you know, that's not how poverty works. You don't throw a little money at it for a year and then it's taken care of. So. Anyway, but we will be getting, you know, that extra half FD of counselors. There'll be us for the district to determine how to. How to allocate that, whether it's the same teach building or whatever. But anyway, there will be additional FD counselors coming. And the other big one this year was nurses, of course, because of COVID. And when you look at the actual numbers, it's actually a quarter of a nurse. They essentially. Before COVID, we're funding essentially zero nurses for each building. Now they're going to fund an additional quarter of an FTE and 2223 and an additional quarter above that in 2324. An additional quarter above that in 2425. So over the next three years, there will be three quarters of a nurse. In the allocation system per school. So we're getting closer to what probably should be they, you know. Obviously, those nurses are needed sooner rather than later and they spread it over three years, which is unfortunate, but that's the way it is. In terms of social workers and psychologists, they were essentially funding zero before and. They didn't really, I mean, they will say they increased it, but the increases for a social worker. Is like point oh four FTE. So what you do with four one hundredth of a social worker is not going to really make any difference. And they added point oh four for the next three years and psychologists, the same thing, point oh one. So you can do that all rounds to zero. So essentially they they didn't increase. Social workers and council and psychologists at all, but there will be an increase in in counselors. So. It's, you know, it's it's better than zero, but it's not anywhere near what what they need to be doing. So. So unless anybody's got any questions on any of that, that's what I have for the legislative report. Okay, hearing none. We'll go on to the consent agenda. So I'd like to get a motion to approve the consent agenda. Then moved in second and that we improve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well, any opposed, say no. Consent agenda is approved. The next item is board discussion and. This is about the. Annual staff recognition celebration. And so. Ms. Core, who's in the process of trying to organize this year's event is would like to get some. Some input on. From anybody who has ideas on how that should be done. I think. Last year. We had a virtual celebration with Zoom, which but also involved. Bringing out food to all the buildings so that people could enjoy a meal in their in their buildings and. I think we had some it's a raffles last year as well. And so. Yeah, I don't know. Has anybody got any? I don't know. Discord, did you want to make any further comments about? I think that's kind of the direction you're thinking of going this year.
That's correct. We also did service awards and recognition and. The raffles, we had a lot and it was nice to see that participation. What I've heard so far is we should, we need to do something like that again, but perhaps mix up. Lunch or maybe do a breakfast or something like that. I'm just looking for. Some ideas from the board, some input from the board. The tentative date that it's scheduled for is it's a Thursday, May 19. We did it June 4, the previous year and. It was a little late in the year. So there are some people who, because of the end of the year coming up, who. Didn't stop by and get their raffle prizes, which we're still distributing out. So I'm open to suggestions, any and all. It's it's your guys's. It's the board appreciation. It's the board recognition of staff. So.
I really appreciate the the earlier date. Because I think teachers are so stressed by June that it's nice to take time beforehand. And I think there were some talk about yes, gift bags for everyone. And maybe putting raffle prizes in the gift bag or do we want to do another Zoom? Situation where people are included. situation where people are included?
The past before COVID, what what did we do? What did that look like?
Before, go ahead.
Go ahead, Debbie.
Before COVID, we would rent a space. We would have food brought in and served. We would usually the board president gives a speech, the superintendent gives a speech and the board does the service year recognitions, they twenty years, thirty years, it starts at five years and goes in increments of five. And they would hand out the awards, they would have oh my gosh, I can't even believe I'm blanking on this. Someone who is elected or voted on in the district who works well with the community and it's like the one special award to that person, the person doesn't know that they're getting this, the board does the raffle of the of the prizes. So that's what we used to do.
And recognize retirements. Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, the award typically is called partners in education. So
Thank you, Dave.
It was like, generally, the teachers would vote for somebody in the district who they thought, you know, other than a teacher who was in a support role, who they thought was deserving of recognition, I think was the
Well, I think people nominated them, right?
Yeah, right, correct. And then they voted on, yeah. So it wasn't voted on by the board or it was voted by the staff.
So are is kind of what you're hearing from teachers that it'd be better to keep it virtual? Or building kind of siloed rather than all coming together again?
You know, that's maybe that's something we put on this survey.
If we're going to rent a place, we usually need to do so ahead of time. I think the last time we did one, the the last one I can remember was at the bowling alley. And there were, I mean, it kind of varies on the day. So there are a good number of people out. I'm going to guess, I don't know, my recollection might not be great, but I'm going to say maybe forty staff were there for that one.
Yeah, that one wasn't nearly as well attended as the sit-down one at the community center where I'm guessing there was maybe two hundred.
And we had them in the foster gym. And there was a a high percentage of the staff turned out for that. Wouldn't you say, Dave?
Yeah, I was I was thinking this year, you know, in terms of since we have a certain amount of uncertainty related to COVID. And it seems to me, I was thinking maybe the logical place to do it this year would be fostered just because it, you know, it's been remodeled and some staff haven't probably had an opportunity to see it. And plus it allows us to, I mean, if we rent a place, then you got to put it presumably deposit down or something and, you know, as opposed to using our own facility. So but it depends on, yeah, I mean, whether yeah, it's, I mean, it'd be great to get everybody together in person, but whether this year's there are you to do that, given the trends of COVID, I don't know.
I really like the idea from the past. I don't think this happened in what I've seen, but there was a tradition that the board actually served the food. And I just think that would be a really nice gesture. Whatever it is, and I know that our food service would prepare it if we wanted to do that and we could have it in person as well as virtual. Just a camera on the speaker and on the room.
How many people can the commons accommodate?
Oh, it's got a pretty large capacity. You know, several hundred for sure, depending on how we were to space everything out.
Yeah. And the last one, I think we had at Foster was actually in the gym, which is right next door. So yeah, I don't know the relative capacity of the commons versus the gym, the new commons, I'm not sure.
Well, I was thinking of the auxiliary gym also.
Oh, we used to do it in the big gym.
Yeah, we did in the big gym.
And it was pretty full, wasn't it, Dave?
Yeah. And it it also has the advantage that it's literally next door to the to the kitchen. So you know, you don't have to walk very far.
Yeah, the comments could accommodate it.
Comments would be in there. Yeah, yeah.
My one curiosity about that is, would we not want those folks to be able to participate rather than give their labor to then participate?
Well, they I I don't think they helped that night, did they?
No, oh, that, so the the cooking was done by the administrative folks and then the serving was done by the board members. And so yeah, none of the food service workers were
Administrators help serve. I really like the idea of doing it in person. And if we take you do a survey, could we handle both?
Yeah, we can give them the options on there. So what I can do is we can send out to the board the way that that question might be phrased. And then you can each, you know, provide feedback and say, okay, that's capturing the relevant information we want to get back from them.
And if we do it in person, we should probably get that survey out.
Next week. Yeah. So that's when we're planning on doing the the next survey out anyway. And there has been feedback about the food also. Some people, you know, are also very interested in some additional food that might come from outside of food services.
Go ahead.
Depending on, you know, how the response to get back from the survey, I'm, of course, I imagine like most things, it might be a little bit of a mix potentially, or maybe not. But I think we could still like zoom the awards part of it as well. So that folks that maybe, you know, don't want to join for food or aren't able to could still participate in that piece.
Well, I and I also remember they had themes, like one year it was a cowboy theme, my Dave, what else? There was a cowboy theme where we had cowboy food, western food.
We could have a survivor theme.
Yeah. And then if we can all work on getting donations for raffle prizes, that would be good. Do you remember what some of the other themes were, Dave?
The other themes?
Themes, yeah, I remember the West. I remember the Western one.
That's a great question.
Did you ask, what was, what's the budget? I think it's I recall, I don't know.
I think it was seven, wasn't it?
Five and seven thousand. That's what's typically been allocated.
And if we don't have to rent a place, then there's more that can be spent on raffle things or whatever.
Well, some of those, yeah, some of the items we, we have to be careful about what goes out because it can be a gift of public funds. So it's that's basically for the food and for the awards is what the but zeros in on.
And this year, the awards should not be so costly because I think last year it was two years worth of awards. Is that right, Deb?
That's correct.
So Carrie might have some ideas about how to work that survey. She's
Yeah, we'll have a conversation about it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have, I don't know, Miss Core, do we have enough for you at this point?
We do have enough and based on the survey results and
Okay.
Are there two members from the board that will be the go-to? Or would you prefer an email sent out to all board directors for decisions?
I'm I'm willing to be a person if they only want two people.
Yeah, and I am too. I I really had fun working on this last year.
Okay, sounds like you got here too.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Next, move into the questions only section. So the first one was the refugee and immigrant services. Does anybody have any questions on that one?
Finally, question is the context is hard for me to gather from just the PowerPoint, but how does this overlap with the summer school that we're offering, operating summer programs?
I don't know, Dr. Hernan, you know, take that. I I can, I mean, I think there's some of the programming is run, there's funded by the I R C and then some of the regular school programming is done as well. So
Yeah, I think they're they're not the same program. They're two different items for sure. Ms. Chen isn't here tonight, so I can make sure she, we get a direct more complete response back to you. But yeah, a lot of the funding for summer school, the the students who are being served also depend on the funding source. So it's going to depend on sometimes they may be happening close to the same time and it may look the same, but students may be getting served in different ways.
One of the things that's really been important, I know over the years with this is when we get a new wave of immigrants from wherever. And sometimes, sometimes the students that come have had school experiences and some of them have not. And so particularly for the younger kids, the summer program really focuses on a lot of students who maybe have never had a school experience or anything like what we consider school experience in this country. Get a chance to, you know, experience school and get used to it. And, you know, without all the you know, stuff associated with with the actual school. So they, so they're much better prepared when they come to our schools in the fall in terms of the what the routines are and what the expectations are and things like that. So I know I just want to express appreciation to the I R C. They've been a great partner to us for many years and they, you know, without them, we would be, we'd be in a big a lot of trouble because they really support these new immigrants that come at us, which we know in the long term, these students perform, you know, to some of the best academic performance of any of our students, you know, if they get the right support and and actually make it you know, to the through the system. So but the I R C has been completely invaluable and and helping us over the years do this. So we just want to thanks. Thanks to all the work that they do. And I know as we probably step up, we'll probably be getting some more immigrants coming from the various trouble spots around the world and and they will be much appreciated. So any other questions on that subject? Okay, about move on to the next one, summer school update. We have a, there's a lot of questions that came in about that. Did everybody get them answered to their?
I have one question. Go ahead.
Yeah, please, please.
I guess I was really pretty surprised that we were only going to have elementary at one school. And the last thing I heard, we were having it all at all three. So I'm wondering if if you can talk a little bit to the, if someone can talk a little bit to the staffing and what we've done to incentivize or what we've done to bring in new staff or I guess I'm just really surprised that we're down to one school.
We we have directors, we have Michael Crowell, who's going to present this afternoon on summer school. And he did a briefing paper to talk about how we started off with three schools, went down to two, that was option A, then option B, then option C. So Dr. Hernan gave full approval for all three schools. Then we went to option B, then option C, but Michael Crowell is going to present and share the information and probably answer all the questions you may have.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Go ahead, Michael.
Okay, good evening, everyone. How, let me just, this just kind of cut out here. Okay. So in terms of, well, first I'd like to thank the the board of directors, Dr. Herndon
Michael, I'm sorry to interrupt. If you could just answer questions.
Oh, okay, sure.
And we could just move from there.
Yes, sir. Okay. So, so all three K five sites were considered for summer school. And so a staffing survey went out to to garner staff's interest in terms of what positions they would be interested in. The survey was sent out multiple times. The initial thought was to have it have our all three K five schools. So based on staffing availability this summer, we came down to one school and and basically because of the staffing ratios. Option A considered three K five schools, option B considered two K five schools, and option C was one K five school. So really what it comes down to, it's it's the staff availability to work of the summer. We've also reached out to our guests and substitute teachers who have current certification. And so we're we're working on that. So based on the, so based on the current staffing ratios, we will be able to serve up to approximately three hundred and fifty students this summer. At the K, at the K far, at the K four level.
Has there been any consideration to looking outside the district? Because I know in the past we've done that.
I'm sorry, could you?
Look outside, looked outside the district for instructors.
We considered that option. However, it it based on feedback from H R, we decided to go with internal candidates and our substitute pool.
And was there any extra incentives giving given to do summer school, teach summer school?
I don't agree.
Michael, how many staff members would that be?
We're we're in the process of, so the the closing deadline for staff to apply for summer schools positions ended on Friday, May eighth. So we're in the process of collecting all that information and putting it together at this time. So I'd be able to provide that update over the next couple of days.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, I think it's just, you know, I think it's just a challenge. You got a lot of staff who've been working super hard and you know, I think a lot of them are just burnt out to go additional. And that's probably going to be true of anyone you're looking anywhere else, you know, substitutes, they've been, they've been run pretty thin. It's just the challenge that we have. But if we can serve three hundred and fifty, you know, elementary students, that's awesome. I mean, I'd love to be able to serve as many students as we can.
Yeah, I was just running some kind of rough numbers. So three hundred and fifty elementary, that would be probably about twenty percent or so of our elementary students group. Then in the last test, we know that's about sixty percent or, you know, two or more grade levels behind. So, you know, we're not serving as much students who need it. But I understand the the limitation, the limiting factor here is staffing, which is really and I know to the question of, you know, hiring outside people, I know, I mean, we've I've seen that in the data in the past is that when you look at the progress that are made, students can meet some incredible progress, academic progress in summer school. However, what we've seen is that when they're being taught by our staff and the folks that know our students, they make the big gains. And when we bring people from the outside, not so much. And so that's that's the other big challenge. I mean, it's and you know, yeah, I don't, I don't know the answer to this, but yeah, it's be really great to figure out how we're gonna, you know, for that extra kind of forty percent of students that we're not able to serve in in the summer school. You know, how do we get them the benefit of some of this? And I, yeah, like I said, I don't have the answer. It's, it's obviously, I mean, I wish it was money that we, because we have money to throw at it, but it's not, it's staffing. And so whether. We can, you know, find some, you know, great tutoring company. I don't even know what, what would work, but. Anyway, that's going to be an ongoing challenge as far as, as far as I'm concerned, but I'm, I'm really great. It's really great to hear that you're up to. 350, I think in the presentation you were at 180. So the more we, the more of those students we can serve, the better. So.
Let me be clear. So currently we have eight hundred and eighty plus, we can serve up to 350 enrollment closes out on April 27. Or 22nd rather, and we've been doing a really big push on getting that out there to our, to our families in terms of multiple means of. Communication such as. The family liaisons have been communicating, classroom teachers. Through our district website, enrollment for the first time is on our district website and 20 plus languages. We've done paper enrollment forms and. Nine different languages as well. So we also have it advertised on the district. Board reader and the reader board in front of Foster High School. And so we're going to continue to push. The enrollment this week and hopefully we'll get those numbers up. And I, I don't see any reason why those numbers won't increase.
Yeah, that's great. I appreciate all the effort they're putting into that because this is really. I think really important. Like I say, we've seen in the past, students can do some incredible academic improvement and they're just, even just in the four weeks because. It's, it's kind of concentrated and there's a little smaller class sizes and it's great. So. Okay. Any other questions on, for Mr. Coyle on summer school?
I have one other inquiry, it may not be for Mr. Coyle, but I'm just kind of generally speaking around after school programs. Is there a possibility of bringing in an after school program that could actually extend through the summer?
So yes, I can answer that. We're currently working with Champions, which is a after school program that works with surrounding districts. And so what we're working on, we're working on a currently an after school program that runs 12:30 to 5:30. And then we are looking at options for an extended program before school, which would start at 8:30 and, and at approximately 8:40. Monday through Friday during the 22, 23 school year and an after school program component, which would include. Three, which would be from about 3:15 to 5:30 and that would also run it, run Monday through Friday as well as after a program. For spring break, for midwinter break and spring break as well as, and we're also working on a, an extended. Program for the month of August, which would run August 1st through August 12th. So we're currently exploring those options. Things are looking pretty good. Mr. Howard and I have a site visit scheduled with a neighboring district to look at. An after school program that's currently. Working in effect and where students are engaged in the learning. And so we're, we're excited about doing that, that site visit in the Kent School District. Next Wednesday.
That's great. So that after school program that you talked about next fall, is that going to expand to all three elementary schools?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on that subject? Okay. Want to thank, thank Mr. Coyle for all his hard work on this and I'll look forward to having a great summer school program. The next item is the WAC HITS report. Are there any, anybody have any questions on that one? Okay, seeing none. We'll move to the action items. There's one action item and that is the. WASDA legislative position. So before I take a motion, I'll just. Explain this, what this is a little bit. So. In April, this is the window when school boards and individuals can submit. Proposed legislative positions to WASDA, the School Directors Association for Consideration. In their typically September general assembly meetings and. I put three of them together here and then a question from Director Morris actually brought up another one, which I'll talk about potentially we could submit. So the first one. Here is, is a result of some research I did looking into how the state funds. These support positions that is nurses, social worker psychologists, counselors, librarians. For our career and technical education students, CTE students that is taking RCT courses. And it turns out that for, and I did a lot of research with the governor's office, the legislature, OSBI. And nobody can come up with any good reason for why. These students get a lower allocation of those support staff than everybody else does. And it's, it's apparently been in the budget for years and. You know, why nobody questions it before? I'm not sure. I've talked to the finance. Director in OSBI and his comment, well, you know, we just need to have a, have a technical fix for that. So anyway. What this, this first proposal, it simply says that, that, you know, the, the CTE students should get the same level of staff support as everybody else does. For us, this is, it's not a huge number. It's about $22,000 per year statewide. If you add it all up, it's about $13 million and. But the thing is that, you know, as, I mean, we want to be growing our CTE program. So the more students that are taking CTE, then this number will go up over time and. You know, this is, I mean, we know for a whole variety of reasons, we need more nurses, social workers, psychologists and counselors. And so this is just. You know, one little piece of a way to, to get it. So anyway, that's. The first one, I'm going to talk about. The issue that Director Morris brought up related to this and running start in a second, but the other two positions. That I have here are related, they're kind of wording issues. The WASDA has a couple of positions that are. Year after year or year voted as the number one and two positions and they're related to the, the idea of full funding. So for funding a basic education and full funding of staffing levels. And the, it's interesting that when people vote for that, they always think full funding means more. That is that we aren't fully funding it. However, when the legislature hears the word full. And it's kind of been stated in the McCleary decision from a few years ago. Full, when they hear it is defined as whatever they fund it. That's the definition of full. And so. You know, that's not what people think about. I think when they're, when they're voting for this and, and the constitution actually uses the word ample. You know, it's, that's the constitutional requirement for the legislature to amply fund these programs, not fully, but amply. And so. These are just a couple of these other two positions I have thrown here was to basically use the word amply, which is what the constitution uses. Instead of the word fully to more, you know, effectively communicate to the legislature on, on the issue. So those. That's just kind of explaining these. I, these need to be submitted by April 20th and then they go through the process and. I'm on the process that reviews them is the WASDA Legislative Committee, which I'm on this year. So. We're meeting at the end of past, at the end of April in Pasco to consider all the, the, the positions that come in from around the state. So I'll be able to. Advocate for these now. Before we go to. Motion on these. I guess first of all, is there any, any questions on these? Any questions? Okay. Now, the question that Director Morris brought up was a really good one. And that is, so what about our running start students? And particularly in related to the counselor. So running start students are students that go take courses at local community college, typically I think Highline or South Seattle or some of them may have built the Bellevue, but. And the way the funding allocation works for those students is interesting because. The, the legislature allocates a certain amount of dollars for each running starts student, each FTE student. And the 93% of those, it, it all comes to the school district, but 93% gets paid out to the community college. And 7% is kept by the school district. So that 7% needs to cover every, every expense that the school district has associated with the running start students, which. Includes, you know, paperwork and I don't even know all the, you know, maybe Dr. Hernan can shed a little light on this, but. All the things, I don't know if we have to provide transportation or not, but you know, and under that would come counseling. And we need counsel, you know, the, the kids will need counseling and help, help them get through that. And the question is. The amount that we get allocated for that is about. When I calculated it, it's about half an FTE person for the 75 we get about, I think we have 75 running start students this year. So the question is. And this, and I posed this to Dr. Hernan and if, you know, we can get the answer in a few days or whatever, if we need to, but. Is that sufficient to cover the district costs of, associated with these running start students, including all the, you know, the administrative costs, whatever counseling costs we have, whatever transportation, whatever costs we have?
Yeah, I mean, that's a good question. And that's why a lot of school districts are challenged by running start because that. It does take a big bite out of that allocation. To kind of put it in perspective, anytime there's a grant, usually there's a federal like a percentage to have for the administrative over cost. Overhead of running the grant. And that typically will vary depending on the size of the grant, kind of the implications in it. Typically, if I can remember correctly, it varies anywhere between like six and 14% depending. I would say 7% is definitely on the low side. Because there is quite a bit involved with what is happening to support the students and that number of running start students. As Mr. Howard could, could. Eliminate being a high school principal for a long time. Over the years, that number has vastly increased to the. Area colleges, especially the two-year colleges. So. For us, we have a good number of students who end up going to Highline Community College, Renton Tech. Those are the two big ones for us because of their proximity. And of course, the two-year colleges don't mind at all because it's a big boon for them. They have a bunch of more students there that are on hand. And it's helpful for them. And you know, the, the challenging part for that can be that for some students. It's not like being in high school. They don't get a call if they don't show up. Parents might not know what's happening or guardian at home. If they're doing their work or not. So for some students, it works out great. For others, not so well. My oldest son actually did running start. For two years and it was not a good match for him. He was, he, he did not have very good time management skills. And they're not, that's not what they're teaching you there. They kind of expect you to be on campus, do what you need to do. And the professors, many of which are adjunct professors. You know, they're there to do whatever the teaching is that's there. So in the meantime, the students who really struggle, especially if they're part-time. Come back and they do need that additional guidance from our counselors, additional support, you know, that may be needed back at the high school. So. I would say that that number is pretty small. I always thought the best way to think about. The running start students is if basically they provided it as a super FTE like they do for skill centers. So for skill centers. For those who aren't familiar, skill centers are kind of the CTE conglomerate, kind of a. Site in each region. We have one in Highline where our students go PG seven skill center and there's a super funding for those students so that. There's not a discouragement of counselors saying, no, 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 stay at the high school. Don't go to the skill center. Because then if we were losing that funding, no one would want to send their kids to the skill center. They, they would keep the students themselves. So there's, you know, the skill center is not exactly the same as running start. You're not necessarily getting college credit. There, there's obviously way more available for students at a two-year college than there is at a skill center. But I would say that for me, I'd rather see that kind of allocation rather than just an administrative overhead percentage of the allocation. But I know that means significantly more dollars and the two-year colleges would definitely push back on that because they don't want to see anything diminish. The role and, you know, certainly for many students, that serves an, an extremely important role for them. Many are able to. You know, maximize those two years. They basically graduate high school and they have an AA at the same time. And so they really can leverage that. If they, if they're really coordinated about what they're doing. But that's a long way of saying. I think the, at least the administrative overhead cost for us should be higher than the 7%.
Okay, so. And I can contact you afterwards, but do you think we could get some kind of ideas from our counselors about, you know, what the FTE? What they're actually spending in terms of FTE?
Yeah, I can try. I can reach out to them again. Yeah, but I'll, we'll, we'll email them and get, get some feedback.
Okay, so this probably did some, yeah, some more research. I'm happy to submit a position on that. I would probably keep it kind of high level just to say that we want. These support staff funded, you know, amply and equitably. The other part of this is equity because. You know, I think, you know, for example, a running start student that's coming from a family up in Rednand who's, you know, ever, all the, the entire family has been just into college and. You know, they're very, they're native English speakers and, you know, they're always familiar with the system, is not going to need much counseling support. Whereas if you're talking, you know, one of our students, an immigrant from a new country, you know, the family has never been to college before. You know, that student is going to need a lot more, you know, counseling support than other students. So. So anyway, the, you know, the equity component needs to be in there. So, okay, so this, go ahead.
Can I ask a question too?
Yes, please.
Aren't some of our running start kids taking some classes at high school and some at college?
Yes.
And we don't get any of that percentage for them?
Yeah, it's, it's an FTE percentage. So for example.
Okay.
If a student is taking half, you know, at, at Foster and half at community college, then they're essentially half a point five E student, yeah, which.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. So if there's no other questions that I, at this point I'd entertain a motion to. Approve the three, one, three proposals that I have here. And then with the understanding, I will. Pursue a little bit this other, the one related to. The running start students and get a little, little data maybe from, from Dr. Hernan and, and submit that one as well. It sounds like that would be a good one to put in as well, but. Well, I'll bring that, the wording back onto the, to the next meeting on that. So if that makes sense. So. Can I have a proposal or a motion to approve the three proposals that I have here?
So moved.
Let's move it seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
And, and thank you, Director Larson, because the counselors are the one that brought that up to.
Yeah, that's a very good point. And you know, the counselors, I mean. And we're pursuing this counseling under funding from a whole lot of different angles. FTE is one of them. CT students is another one, just general equity, you know, poverty, high poverty is another one. So hopefully. Like I say, we're, the legislature will be giving us a half an FTE more, which is better than nothing, but then we still have a ways to go to get our staff, our folks staffed up properly. Okay, so that motion is approved and see, we're now to the final one. Public comment. Do we have any other? Let's see, the end of the meeting, public comment. I don't see anybody raising their hand. I don't see. Anybody, anybody in the chat? Miss Cord, do you see, see anybody?
I do not.
Okay. Going once, going twice. Okay, um, we're at the end of our meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we adjourned. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, good evening.
Good evening.